Got a second, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero, Lisa. I'll just need one of those signed so I can get a copy to Lisa and keep one for. Pass one down, I imagine. Thanks, sir. I heard that. You need one signed too, Lisa?
Yep, I'll just pick the one right there.
We got good news out of our employee that was injured over the Fourth of July weekend, but unfortunately he is extending his FMLA to its final point. And I was coming to you to ask if we could extend that. He's in therapy now, he's back at home. He's got therapy moved at Bluffton, he's going three to four times a week. And he actually stopped in a day and seen him and talked to him, and he's on the road to recovery, and he is very interested in coming back to work.
I'll make a mention to all that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Congrats for making it back, that was an iffy one, wasn't it?
Yeah, he's listed on the, what he went through, 5% survival rate, and he's one of them. Echo.
Origin it.
Echo where they pressure out your veins and filter your blood. Fort Wayne has a 50% record, and he's lucky he was there, but nationwide it's a 5% survival rate, once you get put on the ECO or ECHO machine. So he feels pretty lucky.
Yeah, I should.
Tell me, tell me glad he's back.
Got time left. Next, you guys are aware, I'm sure if you read the emails, we do have a progress, construction progress meeting tomorrow. Just giving you a reminder about that, and with that being said, we'll have Connor kind of update us on where we're at with that.
Is it Zoom or Teams meeting?
On site.
I want to make sure.
Yep.
Hello? You doing? Great. We're moving, and as the construction progress meetings start, I would ask that instead of coming to these meetings and kind of doubling up or tripling up with council and everything, that we just do normal construction progress meetings from here on out, if you guys are okay with that.
I can bring what comes from the meeting to the, here.
Okay, that'd be perfect.
You need a report on them, so they're public.
Yeah, and then anytime you need me here, I'll be here. I want to say the same things three times over.
Yeah, so much was involved though, for me to translate what was happening through all that, it was easier for you just to speak it.
Yep, and you, I mean, you'll be able to have like, like, meeting minutes or an agenda when you come in here, so it should be pretty clear.
Sounds good to me.
Yep, and we have, we've started building up the building pads, the cold storage building pad is complete. I expect to have rebar shop drawings returned to us tomorrow, at which point we'll go into fabrication. I'd say we're a few weeks away, maybe three, from starting to pour the first concrete for this project. About the same time that that happens, we're also intending to pour concrete for the salt storage building, so that's also on track. Those are the big items.
I was out there this morning and looked like maybe if we have good week and a half maybe yet to get that, the main pad.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Because it looks like they got the north half, two-thirds, maybe?
Yep, exactly, yeah, they, they've kind of been watching the weather, we did get really, really wet for a while there, and so they've spent some time drying out and trying to get rid of some of the wet junky soils so that, and from their borrow pit, so that it's usable there. Everything's being tested, and we're getting reports from Alton Woodzig, so I think everybody should have a pretty reasonable level of comfort that we're in good shape. I've started to see them, as of this afternoon, I only had one test, called Alton Woodzig a second time, and said, what's going on here? Because they were really lagging behind, and they sent me about five tests, and I've gotten that over to Mike Swan.
The thing I worry about is that if they are that lagged, if they have a bad lift, you know, it can be four or five months on the means.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're getting verbal approvals as we're going, it's just the paperwork aspect of it's falling behind. Yeah, we're thrilled, we got a little bit of asphalt down, just to give us some nice space to park in and hopefully keep the site clean and organized. We'll do our best. We're going to definitely be battling it to some extent. Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Last thing we want to talk about, Nate, if you want to join. Nate and I have discussed in the past, and I've been here quite, quite over a year and a half, I kind of see what's going on and where some money's going, and look at surrounding counties and wanted to entertain a driveway slash road cut slash right-of-way and heavy oversized load permit fees. Some, a lot of surrounding counties do have a schedule for that, and a couple don't, but we do not as well. We receive phone calls for our oversized permits for trucking coming through town and county roads, and we don't have anything in place for that. I have received many phone calls for driveway pipes after the permits, they, some expect us to bring them material, and this is what we've done in the past, I've seen a lot of different things, so whatever we do, I'd like to just put it in order of what we will do and what we won't do, so we can be equal with everybody. But I do know when we deliver stone, it takes time away from employees, it takes money out of our budget, it takes fuel, so it's, it's going to an individual and not every citizen, like when we repair a road. So I just wanted to bring that up to see what you guys had to think about that.
Do you example, like the driveways, do you supply all the material if somebody wants to put a new driveway in?
Well, if you go with like a new home build, no, they'd do it all, but if you get a farmer that wants to add an extra field entrance, then he'll buy the pipe, put it in, and we'll take them a load of dirt, or we've taken a load of stone and drop it, or if somebody wants to cut the road to put in a manure spreader pipe, so when they run hoses under the road, not across the road, they ask for us to bring gravel, so they can put the gravel back on the road. We've even, even if, they don't ask for anything, if they cut a paved road, which chip seal road, they leave a two-foot gravel strip that then settles, and then we have to go reseal it to maintain it, which also is a cost to us. Yes. Free right now.
Call, hey, I cut the road.
Road cuts usually yes, but it's more the field entrances and driveway pipes where people just ignore it, or some don't even know we have a process or a permit.
Often what you'll find with like the road cuts, it'll be like, hey, I'm planning on cutting the road, I got equipment out here, I got up to the edge of the road, I need some stone tomorrow or the next day. And because we don't have a real process for it, it's kind of expected that we provide the stone. The explanation of that has been, or the history has been, is that because we provide the stone, then we're at least there to inspect the road cut, but because of there's no, there's no fee schedule and there's no penalty for either misinformation, lack of information, there's really almost no enforcement action on that, short of us going to the county attorney to pursue them for damages. So it really escalates a minor conflict, probably beyond what needs to be, so we, as a highway department pursued, really having a disagreement with property owners.
Allen County even requires a $5,000 bond to put in a driveway pipe.
Yeah, so you can, as a property owner, really pull your own permit unless you've got the ability to get the bonding, your contractor has to do that. And that's for a simple driveway or field entrance on their right-of-way.
Yeah.
So we wanted to provide you with a list of surrounding counties and what their fee structures are, what they charge, kind of look at where they're at. I, what's startling is we're the only county that does not charge for anything.
Yeah, Blackford.
Oh, Blackford, I'm sorry. No, correction there, Blackford does not.
Well, I know it's much cheaper, but it's, it's still, we'd still be farther ahead than what we're doing now, so.
I think the, I just don't want to do it on the spur of the moment, we're having a conversation, I think we need to put people on notice that we're having discussion.
For sure.
And maybe give a grace period that they can ask questions or have, give, provide feedback, and maybe even an incentive saying, if you get it done by X date, we'll waive it or 50% off or whatever, but give a timeframe, this is when it's going to go into effect, at this rate.
Let's go through a public hearing, right? You guys are just imposing, let's publish it and get some feedback.
We're just discussing. You'll have to do this as an ordinance anyway, just to create the fee structure and penalty system anyway, so you'll have to go through that, and there's monies, so then whatever money's being brought in, I think council's going to have to get involved with that as well. So it's not something that just could be implemented, and it's not something that we have the authority to even create on our own, so.
We at one time, as a highway department, furnish pipe and do the work. Somebody said we used to. But, but not to install it. Driveways. Had to buy the pipe, I was thinking like.
This was used.
Okay, yeah, 15, 20 years ago, okay.
Do we know how many driveway cuts we have here right now?
We could pull that, because we have been tracking the permits that get applied.
Like to know that, and then also what we feel the average cost to us as a county.
Man hours, getting.
I'd like to see a study on that, also, so we require permits for, see the asterisk service has no charge, for a road cut, so I'd like to sync on information on that, and then the utility.
And I think when it comes to utility permits, because you are a fiber-ready community, I think you pass some sort of an ordinance or language stating that you would not put a utility permit fees in place, so I think you might have restricted yourself from that.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at that too.
So that's something I think Chad.
But I know.
Helped you.
The drainage has, if there's a legal drain.
If you're in the fiber-ready program, I think you could have a nominal permit fee, but you have to have like one point of contact, that if it goes to the auditor, to the auditor gets it to me for the drainage, or the down-slow highway.
Right, there had to be an efficient turnaround on that, yes, I remember now. That's right.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense, and then also on the oversized vehicle, I'd like to see what, what you're kind of envisioning there. There's kind of what the toll it's taking on our roads, and where you see the justification on that, I'd like to understand.
Certainly.
Discussion, might as well talk about it all.
Yeah, I think right now, all the, all the taxpayers are paying for it, and only some people are using it, so.
Right.
Figure out what the fees are, what the costs are, and like, like I said, is let's get it out there in front of people, get some feedback, so.
Yep, I think it needs to be a discussion, so that's good. Thank you for bringing that here.
That's all I have, if you have any other questions?
I do not, unless someone else says.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nate, you're staying up there, isn't it?
Yes, I gotta go through my stuff next, so.
So, thank you very much, appreciate everything you do.
Good afternoon, got a couple different items here, the first item I have is that federal rail elimination grant, the feds have delayed the application deadline out to October 11th, so there's a little bit more time to get some application information in, DLA has been working pretty heavily on that. I think there's just a few forms that we've got to fill out on the grants.gov website, so we're going to, well, I think Lisa and I are going to meet tomorrow and try to go through that, fill out what we need to, and then I'm hoping the final application will be done hopefully before Thursday this week, so. He's been working pretty heavily on that, so I'm pretty satisfied with what we've got put together, I think we've got a pretty good application ready for, for that compared to even our other local tracks awardees in the state, so. Next one I have is just a bridge and transportation asset management plans, I think I'd mentioned before a couple months ago that I was going to be working on those, the state did open up the applications for those, and I have the certification letters from LTAP that both have been received and accepted, so those are approved plans for 2023, so we're good for any community crossing matching grant applications. If we determine that we want to apply for a federal asset management plan grant, I know there's a, there's a notice of funding availability out for those grants, I may have to make amendments to the bridge asset management plan to include some of the lower-tier improvement projects. I had a meeting last week with BFNS, who's our bridge inspection consultant, to kind of look at what options we have, so I'm waiting for a report back from them to what projects we could even apply for, and if it's worth the effort to do it. So I'll report to you hopefully later this month with a, with a plan of action or a recommendation to you. Next item I have is just Bridge 106, it's one of our federal aid grants, it's 100 North over the Rock Creek, right-of-way purchases and purchase agreements should be going out soon on that one, I don't have a firm date on that yet, but I've been in conversation with USI, we do need to get those offers out to the property owners on that, so they may be coming in. If owners receive those, they need to coordinate with the, with who's listed on that right-of-way offer, so there'll be buyers involved with that, so they need to call them, not necessarily you or me directly, there'll be a right-of-way buyer that's an agent that'll be involved in that. Next would be Bridge 105, we actually have all of the way, all the right-of-way parcels on that have been secured, now I need to get checks out to everybody, but they have all agreed to it, the three, four parcels or three property owners have all signed the agreements, right-of-way joins had sent me those notifications, and I think checks are going out to two more of the parcel owners, which is actually just one property owner, and the last one I didn't receive yet in time, so we'll get that the next set of claims. So that one actually should make that, that should complete that, and it should be ready for NDOT contracts, so I might see if NDOT's able to move that up, because that's actually a 2023 or 24 project. It's actually a 24, so this one's one we did locally, there wasn't grant money for the design or the right-of-way, right now we're under budget on the right-of-way, so I'm hoping that if, if everything goes well, and if NDOT has money in this next fiscal year, in the 23 fiscal year, or 24, July of 2023, I'm hoping maybe we can move that up, so we'll just see what their eligibility is, but that's, that's a good sign for us, and I've used that on every other consultant, saying that this one's ahead of schedule, what's holding them up on others, so, but we'll see. County Home Road, that's that 200 South to 116, it's that curve correction project there. Right-of-way purchases will be going out very soon, I actually saw the paperwork today for all the offers, all but one offer, strike that, so they should be going out in the mail to the property owners here this week, so they should start seeing those, all the same things apply that would, for Bridge 106, please contact the, the group that's listed on the offers, if they need to coordinate with that right-of-way buyer, not with us, that's why we hire them, so they know the process for the federal aid acquisitions, so they don't need to be negotiating with us, or if any counteroffers and such need to go through them. NDOT quarterly reports, I just got an email late last night notifying me that quarterly reports are open, so I'll be doing those for our open federal aid projects, that'll cover the quarter of July through September. And next I've got utility permits, I have one from Heartland RMC, it's to replace poles on 500 South east of 200 West, and on 100 West south of 500 South, and then another one for Citizens Telephone, it's a section of 1100 West south, or 1,000 West south of 1100 South, and I'm just recommending your approval on those two.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
And last is any right-of-way dedications, and I did not receive any. Okay, oh, and I did not add this on here, I think I'd mentioned before, the road, oh, oh, Michael's got one. Is that part of a sell-off or a minor split? Okay.
Make a motion to accept the right-of-way off of already in road.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
Something I just didn't have on my notes here, just the road conversions, we're going to be working on those right-of-way, hopefully sending those out this month, I know I talked about trying to do that late September, but we don't have those yet to go out, they'll be going out here soon, so. All right, any other questions for me? Thank you very much.
How are you?
All right, this is a follow-up of the last time that our group was here in regards to the Pocabash Coalition and the resolution, I might ask if there's any follow-up questions or after your review of the, of the resolution, otherwise I would.
I have some questions.
Yes.
When you look at this, seems like our trails in Wells County are pretty available, they're paved, they're nice trails, I'm reading over this and signing it, we're not, we're not appropriating funds from Wells County to other counties to put in trails, correct?
No.
All that stays within our own county.
Correct, so the, the, the purpose of the coalition is not to put money into the coalition to build trails, the purpose of the coalition is to help bring money to the communities that own the section of trail. So, for example, if Wells County or Rossian or Bluffton would do a project, the coalition, the task force would help to bring in grant funding and other funding sources to help develop that trail network. Yeah, so not, not a trail building organization per se, but as, but a organization to help those that will own and maintain the trail long-term.
What I wanted to make sure is it doesn't increase the tax base on the residents of Wells County to pay for trails, whether they're in Wells County or outside the county for nothing.
Definitely not on the outside of Wells County, it's Wells County's decision of what to do, Rossians or Bluffton's decision what to do on their own.
So with the resolution, obviously we're in charge of, of being our representative, but how do those, so if they say we need to appropriate funds, how's that come back to the commissioners for approval prior to any funds going?
Absolutely, so the, the task force that would start meeting next year would work on putting together a budget for then, for the following year's budget cycle, for whatever items they feel necessary as far as the budget. So that is what the, the end goal would be, is that there would be no financial requests next year from the, the task force, unless if they. But the actual budget would be submitted for. So, once that's, once that's submitted, that would then be relayed out from the task force to all the individual communities, saying that we decided the, the budget is X amount of dollars, and here's the breakdown of what each community would be putting forth to operate. And so if there's a, like, for example, if there's a marketing campaign, or if there's, we, there's a hiring of a grant writer or something like that, that would be what, examples of expenses that could be put forth in the budget.
See this, and I'm just talking out loud, but my thoughts are with inflation going up, a higher tax rate, all that stuff going on, that I support the trail project, but it comes secondary to make sure people are put food on their table, you know, we have the.
Absolutely.
RSD, all that stuff going through that have increased some people's out-of-pocket expenses, and again, why, I think it's great that we put a trail project in, it's probably lower on my list of priorities than putting the sewer system in or upgrading, you know, whatever those needs are that people actually need, so I just want to make sure that, I trust you. I want to make sure that whatever we do doesn't put a burden on the taxpayer to get a trail in versus feeding their family or putting their kids.
Yep, nope, that's, I mean, any, anything that would be in regards to Wells County would be in regards to decisions that you and the county council would make on funding, if there was matching funds for a grant or whatever, those would be decisions that you would make individually from this, not from within the task force, but as an individual unit. The task force would be helping you to lower your, your outlay to do projects. Yep, correct, yep, grants and fundraising and, yep.
Come back, said, no, we're going to help pay for Angola's.
Yep, nope, that was, from the very beginning, when we started organizing, that was the, the big point, that everybody wanted to make sure that the ownership and the process for each individual community stays their own, and that the task force's job is not to develop the trail, but is to help move the project along by bringing assets to the table that may not exist if there wasn't a regional group together, so. So at this time, I would ask for the resolution to be adopted, we will come back once all legal councils from all the different organizations have reviewed the interlocal agreement, and then we would request that to be signed once those things have been done, so.
Have you reviewed that interlocal?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I've seen the, is this the same one that they had?
Correct, yeah.
So long as it has not been revised, I have seen it and I have no problem with it.
I can just, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero. And I wanted to ask one more thing too, and at least because we've had this discussion already. What if State Road 1 were to expand, and that was pushed forward, the trail would in no way, shape, or form interfere with any of those efforts?
So that would be something that we would work very closely on, the connection between Bluffton and Rossian would have to be looked at with that as a potential occurrence, so that we'd know that it was in the right location, and that it could be done with minor inconvenience to either project, so. Yeah, well, there'll be maybe one location wherever it would impact, that impact can be minimized by its, by the trail's location. The, the good thing with how that right-of-way is set up specifically is that the electric company's right-of-way is between or at where the trail would be, so that's not getting moved, but the right-of-way would more likely expand to the, to the west because of that impediment. So if the trail is on the other side of the impediment or in the impediment, it would not affect the project.
Right, and I know when we spoke about it, you said, no, that this would, this project would be sensitive to the fact that State Road 1 could possibly be expanded.
Yes, yep. Yes, yeah, I want to.
Dash 07?
Next thing, up on the discussion, we're excited to bring in front of you the final draft of the Wells County Vision 2035 comprehensive plan. We started this effort in, I just had to look back and verify the date, but in January of 2020, obviously some things happened over that period of time that slowed our project, our process down, but we feel really good about what we're able process down, but we feel really good about what we're able to present to you for the plan for long term plan for Wells County and its incorporated towns. So at this point in time, I guess I would open up if there's any questions or comments on it, otherwise I would ask for your adoption today.
Well, it's definitely been an exciting review. I can tell you from my standpoint, meeting with both sides of the the groups that support it and don't support some of the projects in it, again, it's a plan. Doesn't mean it's all going to happen, doesn't mean it's not going to happen.
It's a plan, that's a suggestion, doesn't mean it's.
But again.
What I love about it, and I think you brought this up in the APC, is it's out in front of everybody. As many people that have said they don't like it, at least they appreciate the fact that it's out there and it's not behind the scenes. It brought up a ton of discussion that continues to go on, so I appreciate all the work in APC and the group that put it together, so.
Our our goal is that every item would be acted upon in some way, and we talked about this in many of our plan commission meetings going to this point, is that every item in the plan deserves a time of discussion. The answer to that question might be yes, we want to move ahead, yes, but it's going to take more time, no, we think this is actually a bad idea, or we just want to continue that discussion to find a better resolution. So there's many options that can come from it. It's going to be our office's goal is to see each one of those action items at least get some level of attention before 2035.
I propose we support the plan accepted as is.
I'll second.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
All right. I'll wait till the conclusion of the meeting, then I'll have you guys sign on our official copy.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Colin, do you need to copy this? I know what'll happen, we'll walk off.
I want to wait, I want to wait.
All right, cell phone policy. Colin, would you like to chime in here a little bit about some of the history of this and where we're kind of arrived today?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, there's been a question about cell phone use by county employees, department heads, elected officials, and currently there is a county cell phone plan. However, for an individual to have a cell phone plan with a county, there's just kind of a question that's open about what's the can you make personal calls in a county's cell phone plan? Do you have to carry two phones? And so there is an opportunity if the commissioners were inclined to go to selection to rather than have an individual have two phones or have the county pay for a personal cell phone, would be to offer a stipend of sorts to individuals who utilize their own home their own cell phones for work purposes. There this probably happens quite a bit. For example, I I get calls at night. I know Jared has talked about this quite a bit, and he'll get calls all hours of the day for different issues, and the county could alleviate some of that burden by giving a stipend to individuals who use their their personal cell phone rather than a county phone and do county work with it. Commissioners have really a wide breadth of what they could do or would decide to do. You could offer a certain amount of money as a stipend to all department heads who would otherwise have to use their personal cell phone after hours or even during hours if they're out and feel like Jared is. Johnson County, Lisa McCormick here reached out to Johnson County, they have a similar policy, however, Johnson County requires that they itemize the work related calls, and there is a somewhat of there's a bit of scale on how much is paid per call, per minute, or or what have you. That is another option. Jared provided a memorandum from the IRS indicating that the there used to be significant tax consequences to this, but in recent years or so, that's been alleviated by the IRS. I also spoke with the State Board of Accounts today, and the State Board of Accounts told me that you should feel free to craft any policy that you feel is appropriate, be it in number or and how it is that you want to track these things. So on on one end, you could just offer anybody who doesn't have a county's cell phone but uses them after hours, maybe a department head would have a certain amount of money, or you could go another route where they would be required to submit a claim to the county monthly with an itemization of that which they're that which they're using so that it's it's more of a particular application of a certain metric towards what they're actually doing. If you're going to go down that route, my only suggestion would be that it would be up to a certain amount because if someone is using their cell phone quite a bit for work purposes, it may outpace the actual cost of the cell phone, and we don't want to make it compensatory. This is a this is essentially a style of a reimbursement to them for their own use of their own property. So, like I said, it's it's up to you how you'd like to do that. I believe that you should feel free to craft any policy that you see fit. The other issue that we'd we'd run into is the employee handbook would it needs to be updated with regard to cell phone usage. I talked with Lisa about this today, and we probably need to craft a comprehensive new ordinance regarding cell phone usage, private cell phone usage by county employees or department heads, whoever it is, and put that all together rather than piecemealing it out. It's going to take some work to to figure out all of the individuals that we have involved. How do we offer that and what the policy should be to reflect that to make sure that while the employee's privacy is being covered, the also the county is covered for any, we just don't want people taking advantage of it, and I think the policy needs to reflect that.
So my understanding is right now that this is going to be two foot one, a cell phone policy, and then some way to reimburse that person in a very fair manner for those expenses, and then maybe there's a third point here, which is the county offers a cell phone and how that plan would work for for the employee and or elected official. So we've got kind of those three avenues that someone could possibly choose from, but we're saying that the reimbursement could possibly reach a level where you've got to either take a phone or stay under a certain level of reimbursement. Correct?
Right, that's what I'm I'm thinking, because you alluded to not being the liable side of it, and if you offer a stipend on somebody's personal phone, it it can get pretty murky real quick, and then you have them provide whatever that phone is. I mean, how do you track down what is business? I mean, we're taking their word for it, whatever, what's liability? I know IT talked to me saying that you, us three, have a email address, and if we have it sent to our phone, do we need multi factor authentication just for us receiving a county email? We're the only ones that don't, and then whether or not Nate or Sean with their phone would have the same. So it can get kind of loaded real quick. I mean, from my standpoint, I think take a phone for free and the county provides it for it, because it the other way just, I mean, unless you make it as, I don't know, I just, I I I find it difficult to make a stipend amount that might be fair, might not be fair, and whose eyes is fair and whose eyes isn't fair. The phone, that's I don't have an issue for the phone, it's just that I've I've said my set two cents, so.
So, I mean, it feels to me to be prudent to have you write up these ideas and let us look at them from a legal standpoint. Before we implement something that's haphazard or maybe not as thought out as it should be, because I want to do it once and not have to revisit it again.
Yeah, once you're right.
I'll present competing policies and write them in a way, kind of pick one generally, and then we can tailor it however we.
Because I would like to offer fair options to employees.
Sure, absolutely.
And, you know, be very mindful of their time, and if they do need reimbursement, we we should we should do that, so. But anyway, I'll look at it at all angles, and would you like to add something to it? Okay, so what would be a reasonable timeframe you think we throw something together? It looks like there's going to be a little research in this.
Yeah, we've got, there's there's, it it sounds simple, but there's a lot of ways that it can go wrong, and I want to make sure that we're not making we're not making mistakes. But I think by next meeting, if we table this to next meeting, at least I can get something out to all of you prior to, and I can discuss these matters with you individually before we go in, and that'll give me an idea if I need to keep going and looking. Sure.
Okay. I'm okay with that strategy. All right, interlocal agreement for emergency communications department. So we're, go ahead, please.
No, I I have our our draft, and but I it's your floor, so.
So where we are right now, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but it's cleared, essentially the city has said that they agree with a consolidation of the 911 efforts.
We have informal agreement by the two lawyers, and I believe the mayor is in agreement as well, I can't speak for him. It did go to the board of works, I believe, and it was discussed with the board of works, doesn't vote on it. It did go before city council, some of the individuals on city council, my understanding, again, I wasn't there, wanted more time to look at it. I heard from one city councilman who thought that the county should go first. It's on the agenda for both city and county tomorrow. So it's I think the ball's in our court right now as far as whether or not we want to pass this today. I don't know if there's any any reason to keep going back and forth, I'm not I'm not, but I'll hand that to you.
Well, I I think that we've reached a point where we're all nodding our heads. I think that it would probably be prudent at this point to try and push this agreement forward, at least with us, and then let it go to council, and what they do, whatever they're going to do to it, that's how I think.
That'd be my recommendation.
And the costs are.
In 2021, if we had this agreement, we would have reimbursed them $170,000. So the thing for the first year is, council doesn't have a plan yet.
Right, and they have, yeah, they have a point where they're getting the funds from.
Right.
But that is definitely in their wheelhouse.
Correct.
Something they need to start discussing, so the way to do that is for us to push this to them, is that correct?
Right. It's a year to year, right? I mean, if you get it this year, if something goes awry.
There is a cancellation policy in there that we could withdraw from that, but again, the whole purpose of this was to, one, since that 911 center is representing all of Wells County, to bring all of Wells County together through representation and really have a voice on that table of how that's operated, and I think we've accomplished that with this agreement. So it looks like through over the past year and a half, we've finally reached something where we can all kind of agree, so.
Over the last year, so.
Right, and and, you know, I want to thank, you know, the people at this table that have helped push that together and get an agreement and get this over what could conceivably be the finish line, so I'm not going to count my chickens for the hatch, but I think that it's looking very positive that that's the direction we're going, so.
Mike, can I say I agree with you, and also I ran into Mike Miller at street fair, and he indicated to me that they had three new dispatchers that they had recently hired, and I know we were worried about them even being able to staff that.
Absolutely.
But he's he's done a good job in getting getting the word out and hiring some people.
Good, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to move it forward. Give it to council tomorrow, get it over the finish line, and hopefully tomorrow it's done, right?
Absolutely.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
Mayor did indicate this afternoon at 3 o'clock at EMS MA meeting that he was, he'd be voted on tomorrow, but.
Yeah, so I'm feeling very positive about it.
I brought that up about the city. I was at a trails meeting, and John suggested that they are going to make a motion to upgrade the utility line, the 170 and change or 47, whatever that dollar amount, they are going to make a motion, I believe, tomorrow night.
Good.
So it's on the record that they want to pay the upgrade to what they want for the utility extension, so.
Well, you know, two good news items in a row, I like that. Lisa, you've got some items here for us to think of.
2023 meeting dates. I compiled the meeting dates for next year, and I use the pre-meeting hour. The ones on Tuesdays are mainly on Monday holidays. I didn't know if in July, July 3 is your first meeting in July, July 4 is the holiday.
We recognize it on the 3rd, though, right?
We're recognizing it on the 4th.
On the 4th.
So your meeting date would be 3 o'clock Friday or Monday evening.
5 o'clock.
Yes, and I didn't know if the July meetings you could move down a week.
And move to the 11th.
Because there's there's five weeks in that month. Didn't know if that would be an option for you. I think council might appreciate that.
You're thinking we would go on the 10th and the 24th?
Yes.
I I think that's probably more prudent.
Because the 31st is a Monday also, so we won't start until August 7 and 21, so.
I I didn't know who all went away for lakes or whatever.
Yeah. What do you think, Jeff? In favor of 10 movement?
10, and what's the next one?
10 and 24.
Yeah, I think that's way better.
Okay. You need that to form a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Right.
Everything except the month of July, you're. Great, thanks.
Okay, and then the 2023 Wellness Plan. You have the the biomarkers currently. The goals are the same as they were last year, and I also attach, you know, the different sales volume, sugar, blood pressure, cholesterol. We set the goals pretty on the higher side. You can keep them as is, or you can modify them, whatever you want to do.
Where do you think we'll come in with the insurance? Because will we have that next meeting or the first meeting in November?
She's getting things ready. I don't know if it'll be a second meeting or the next time or the first meeting in November, I don't know.
Okay. Because we've not really adjusted the dollar amounts down here much, or if any, correct?
Not ever, not ever.
What do we have as a percentage built into the that line item? Did we have a small percentage in case we go over out of the?
Yes.
Threshold or whatever they call it, so. Yeah, I think it's fairly generous plan, but.
Yeah, I do, too.
I mean, at some point in time, we probably should have a small bump, but right now's not the time, in my opinion, where we're at with inflation, so.
Agree.
At least my opinion, sorry.
Yeah, no.
So. Make a motion to accept these as a.
I'll second.
One favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
Code of Ordinance book, I submitted all of our code of ordinance or all of our ordinance that we passed in 2021 to our American legal, and to do all of those adjustments, it'll be between $500 and $900 for this year. Last year it was between $1,118, now that came out $1,460, so lower this year.
Something came down?
I I must have, I don't know, it they're the same amount of ordinances.
I was going to say, was the amount of ordinances different?
I know Roy and and he went back and forth a lot on codifying them, modifying them.
I'll make a motion from the floor. I'd make a motion for a second.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
And United Way would like to have denim for a difference plaid for a purpose week. October 17th through the 21st, November 14th to 18th, they propose that the employees pay $5 a day or $10 for three days or 15 for all five to wear denim or plaid. You usually approve $2 a day and allow those either denim or I don't know, we've never done plaid, but whatever.
Yeah, plaid is new, but yeah, two bucks a day is my recommendation, it would be my motion. All second.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero. What do we do with this?
Anything? I wanted to give a shout out to the auditor's office. With the bond for our highway garage and the financing, we thought we had it all nailed down before South Bend and the conference was happening, but the bank that bought the money needed a bunch of stuff and we had some girls in the auditor's office pull some good things and made things happen and we basically were able to secure what we had thought we were going to do, but it locked it in and we saved the county between 500 and 600,000 bucks, so they made it happen while this was going, so.
Outstanding.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do we need to do anything with this or no?
I would think so.
Okay. All right, in that case, anything here? No? Colin?
Nothing.
Commissioner?
Good.
Commissioner? Lisa? You guys? All righty, well, in that case, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?